We have a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Okay, motion and second on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, motion carries. And with that, we will, we will start the... Well, I think, yeah, I think you're technically commissioners, and then you'll become commissioners again in about five seconds. I went back and forth in my mind about whether to do excuse, it felt weird to continue in the meeting without excusing the commissioner as well. So, to start the meeting, Commissioner Sally Davis and Michael Larson, who were elected at the November 4th election, if the two of you want to join me at the lectern, we can do the oath.
I, Sally Davis,
I, Sally Davis,
do solemnly swear,
Do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of Michigan,
the Constitution of the State of Michigan,
and the Charter of the City of Marquette,
and the Charter of the City of Marquette,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties,
and I will faithfully discharge the duties,
the office of the Marquette City Commission,
of the office of the Marquette City Commission,
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I, Michael Larson,
I, Michael,
Michael Larson,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of Michigan,
the Constitution of the State of Michigan,
and the Charter of the City of Marquette,
and the Charter of the City of Marquette,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties,
the office of the Marquette City Commission,
of the office of the Marquette City Commission,
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my ability.
Okay, now we have commissioners seated. So next is the election of mayor for the coming year, this is everybody's favorite part. Each commissioner has ballots in front of them, blue and yellow-ish. So the blue ballots are for the mayor, as a reminder, this process is essentially a straw poll, so I will come around, collect the ballots, the chief and I will review them and announce which commissioner has most support, and in follow-up, we're still gonna need a motion and a vote. Okay, so with unanimous selections, Commissioner Paul Schlegel has the most support. Again, we would take a motion and a second and a vote to actually make that official. Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we instate Commissioner Schlegel as mayor of the city of Marquette.
Is there a second? Commissioner Davis?
I will second the motion.
Okay, is there any comments?
I am very excited to see what Paul does as he leaves the city. He has done a great job as pro tem, and I am honored to see him take over the reins.
Commissioner Davis? Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, motion carries, six to zero. Commissioner, incoming mayor Schlegel, if you want to join me at the lectern, do the oath. All right, now we will do one more election, so this is the same thing with the other colored paper for mayor pro tem for the coming year. Okay, and the commissioner with the most votes is Commissioner Otte. And again, we would take a motion and a second to appoint Commissioner Otte as mayor pro tem.
I would make the motion that we appoint Commissioner Otte as mayor pro tem.
Okay, is there a second? Commissioner Larson?
Second.
Are there any comments, Commissioner Schlegel?
I just look forward to working with Jeremy again this next year, and I'm sure that we'll do our best to lead as best we can.
Commissioner Larson? Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify by saying yes.
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 Opposed, motion carries, six to zero. Incoming mayor pro tem, if you want to meet me up front, and then I will not use the gavel again for a year.
I, Jeremy Otte,
I, Jeremy Otte,
do solemnly swear,
do solemnly swear,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
that I will support the Constitution of the United States,
the Constitution of the State of Michigan,
the Constitution of the State of Michigan,
and the Charter of the City of Marquette,
and the Charter of the City of Marquette,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties,
and that I will faithfully discharge the duties,
the office of mayor pro tem of the City of Marquette,
of the office of mayor pro tem of the City of Marquette,
according to the best of my ability,
according to the best of my ability.
Ready to roll? Yeah, so we can now do a roll call, and we'll see if I can get my mind around it in real time. Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Gottlieb? Commissioner Hanley?
Here.
Commissioner Larson?
Here.
Commissioner Mayor? Mayor pro tem Otte?
Here.
And Mayor Schlegel?
Here.
They're in order alphabetical, that helps, thank you. And I'll turn the meeting over to you, mayor.
Thank you, clerk. Commissioners, we have an agenda in front of us, is there a motion or approval? Commissioner Hanley?
I move that we accept the agenda as presented.
Is there a second? Commissioner Otte?
Second.
Pro tem Otte, sorry.
Second, same deal.
Thank you, all those in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, no. That passes, six to nothing. Announcements, we don't have anything really, I was given to me to say, other than, I will say that the dog park is, opening has been delayed for about another week, until I believe it's next Wednesday, the 25th, and I would ask that people refrain from being in the space while they finish up the construction that's going on at Tourist Park. I did pull in there today, and there was at least one person out there with their dogs, and I left them a very polite note, asking them to refrain until the work has been taken care of, and I will say that even though it's an inconvenience, right now, the work that has been done out there is really turning that space into something that is exciting as far as, you know, kind of getting it up to speed, it needed some attention, and it looks really good. So other than that, we will move on to public comments. Comments cannot exceed three minutes per person, please state your name and physical address when making your public comment.
Hi, good evening, commissioners, congratulations to newly appointed, and those of you that are joining as mayor. My name is Chelsea Wilkinson, I'm the executive director at Room at the Inn, representing 447 West Washington. November is homelessness awareness month, so I'm here to make you all very aware of a very urgent concern that I have, and some ideas of how I could use your assistance on this. We had a urgent public board meeting in September. I, it's unfortunate, nobody could attend, but I would like to give some high-level updates on what we talked about at that meeting. First and foremost, when I first started, June of 2023, we were seeing between 16 and 22 people a night staying at our facility, and I have had 46 people sign in every single night for over a year. That is currently what we're seeing, and it would be more if the fire marshal allowed me to have more. Some other things, last, in 2024, we served over 250 individuals, both in our shelter and our street outreach program, it's a pretty incredible number, but in 2025, we are slated to help 350. Room at the Inn, over the last year, we've been able to open a family shelter, we've been responsive to the community need, we opened our family shelter in Ishpeming, and this week, we opened a second family shelter on KI Sawyer. We also secured state funding to launch a permanent supportive housing program to support our chronically homeless individuals who have been homeless for longer than 12 months and have a documented disability. We have spent a considerable amount of unpaid time, leading regional efforts to open shelters in other communities across the upper peninsula. Just in the spring, we helped city staff craft an ordinance, as you are all well aware, to reduce harm on the camping ban. So to this point, Room at the Inn has continued to grow to meet the ever need of our shared constituents, and we continue to hold up our end of the deal. And so what I'm here asking you today, and I will probably use my three minutes at the end of this meeting to put a bow on this ask, it sounds like folks have already considered whether or not we could potentially use the Baraga Gym as a temporary overflow facility. We have other facilities that are slated to be in use as of January 1st, and again, I'll use my remainder of my three minutes at the end, but please consider that as we, as we go on, so thank you all.
Hi, my name is Kim Crane Frost, and so, in follow-up to Chelsea, this is my 39th year, 392 Town Hall Road.
Thank you, Kim.
This is my 39th year working in homelessness in various communities throughout the state, and since 2000 in Marquette County. And honestly, I've never seen things reach this level of crisis for housing vulnerability as what we're seeing right now. Currently, I'm working for Adult Protective Services for the state of Michigan, we have a massive number of elderly people on my caseload with very complex medical needs who are right now facing homelessness. It's gonna take big plans with brave action to really resolve homelessness in our community, but quite honestly, that's not what we need right now. What we need in the immediate is small steps made with compassionate decision-making to reduce the immediate suffering that's gonna occur this winter. Without it, Marquette County citizens will suffer horribly in the winter months, and I'm confident there will be a significant number of deaths due to lack of safe housing. So I just request, you know, I feel like deja vu, here we go again, like looking for housing, asking the city, you know, please consider, and every day, I look at innovative communities around the country who aren't doing huge heroic, implementing huge heroic plans, or just taking small steps to reduce that suffering, and opening up city buildings, and opening up malls, you know, and dead space and all that, and housing vulnerable people. I think Room at the Inn has a good plan to staff it and to make it safe and functional to get us through to the warmer spring and reduce the suffering and hopefully truly eliminate deaths.
Hi, my name is Abigail Andrews, and I'm here representing 447 West Washington Street. I'm the street outreach case manager, and I also help coordinate our family shelter. And as I'm sure you guys have heard from the last two people who have spoken, our need is continuing to grow to a point that our facility cannot match. No matter how hard we try, no matter how much we want to help people, we simply do not have the space to do so, and we need to work with our community to find a solution so that the individuals that I work with every single day have somewhere to sleep at night. And we're not asking for a whole new shelter building, we are asking for somewhere for people to sleep for six weeks, from now until January 1st. We all have homes to go to for the holidays tonight, there are people that I spoke with today, and that I will speak to tomorrow, that do not have that. And I know that it's easy to ignore, but it's not easy when I have to tell people every single day, sorry, we don't have space for you. You have to go illegally sleep outside somewhere, and hope that you don't freeze to death. You have to go to the emergency room, you have to intentionally get arrested so that you can have a space to sleep in jail tonight. Those are not solutions, and we just want to find a compromise that works for us, and that works for the city of Marquette, so that people are safe, and we can continue to work towards long-term solutions. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Glenn Richards, and I live at the homeless shelter at 447 West Washington Street, I've been there about four months. I'm originally from Houghton Hancock area, there are no shelters in that area, anywhere. My brother had to bring me here, and I have no home here, no family, nothing. If I went for the shelter, I'd be dead by now, gross to death, I couldn't survive, even though I'm a Uper, I'd never survive that. There's no place to go, nothing to eat. I think three or four days, with no water, I'd be dead, and I've never experienced anything like this. I worked as a registered nurse for 33 years, got pneumonia, ended up at Market General on the ventilator for 10 days, got out of there, went to a nursing home in Baraga for four days, or four months, and then ended up living with my daughter in lawns for four more months, until I ended up with pneumonia again, and ended up with a pacemaker, and my daughter had said, well, a month before that, if you ever leave, you're gone. Which, okay, if I got a place to go, yeah, I don't want to be here either. Well, two days in a year getting a pacemaker put in was long enough for her, and she just booted me out. At 8:30, when the hospital discharged me, is when she told me that, so I couldn't even stay at the hospital that night. Where was I gonna go? It's fine for July, August, September, hard about October, but after that, it's too cold to sleep outside. I know, I used to be a hunter, I used to sleep outside, thought you had a nice warm fire, you had dogs, you had other hunters with you, you're alone here if you don't know anybody, really alone. And all my kids live away from here, my brother lives in home, that's it, that's all I have else that I've got. My parents are dead, my sister lives in Green Bay. None of them can take me in, I wouldn't expect them to. Really glad this place is here. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment?
My name is Jeff Renshaw, I also live at 447 West Washington, Room at the Inn. Like Glenn, I came from the Houghton Hancock area, where there are zero shelters. I have sleep apnea, which means I have a BiPAP I have to have plugged in every night to keep me breathing while I sleep. If it wasn't for the space at Room at the Inn, I would be in a tent under a tree somewhere. They have really helped me. And I've fought pneumonia three times in the past three months, which now has me on oxygen, which I use oxygen concentrator at night, has to be plugged in. Again, if it wasn't for Room at the Inn, I wouldn't have the electricity to be able to do that. You know, we need help to get people places to sleep. You know, there's people like me with medical problems, you know, I never thought at 53 years old, I would be homeless, but here I am. You know, I'm gonna get back on my feet one day, I'm gonna have a place on my own, but if it wasn't for Room at the Inn and the services they provide, I would be, like I said, in a tree. We're just asking for a little help to get us through while we're processing things. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Okay, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, commissioners, is there a motion, please? Commissioner Larson?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
A second? Commissioner Davis?
I'll second the motion.
Thank you, all in favor, please say yes.
Yes. Yes.
Opposed? Motion passes, six to nothing. That brings us right back to public comment, so public comment will be open, remember that your comments cannot exceed three minutes per person, please state your name if you have not already done so, and physical address when making public comments.
Hi there, me again. You know, I wanted to bring a couple of clients who, when they first arrived to Room at the Inn, we were completely full. Both of these gentlemen had to sleep in our dining room for many, many weeks until a permanent bed opened up. And now, in order to accommodate the people, And now, in order to accommodate the people who exceed that 46 allowed by the Fire Marshal who are horizontally sleeping at night, the folks in our dining room have to sit upright overnight just to get everybody in out of the cold. I'll keep that number to myself for now, but it is not sustainable. A, it is incredibly inhumane to be asking folks to be sitting upright for eight hours. I understand that there are major concerns about using the Baraga Gym. I get it. But I don't, if you guys have another option, I'm begging you to provide one. Location is critical. The police department is right here. I understand that there is pickleball and volleyball and whatever other ball is played in there, but these are our constituents. They're going to die in the next six weeks. And I'm not asking, I'm not asking for it to be all winter. The Salvation Army has already agreed that come January 1st, they will open their chapel for our shelter overflow. But we have nowhere else to be putting people. We will staff it. If it's an insurance liability, I already pay out the wazoo for liability insurance for all of my shelter locations. I will add the Baraga Gym for the next six weeks to that. I will have trained staff that are willing to do it. If I can't get in until 10:30 and you want me out by 7:00 AM because of programming, we will make it happen. But if that is still not enough for this commission, for the staff, for whoever is saying that they don't want to do that, then I'm asking you to put another solution on the table. Because yes, we have some people here that are willing to speak up, but the next commission meeting will be much, this room will be much fuller if I can't, if I can't get people to the table to help me figure out this problem. Room at the Inn continues to meet, to answer the call. And I am, I am coming to you humbly, and I am begging for your help. I'm begging for you to do something. Room at the Inn, if you were to go there right now, we can all go after the commission meeting. It looks like a nursing home. So, let's again, work together on a solution so that our constituents aren't left out in the cold this winter. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Okay, that'll bring us to a close on public comment. That moves us into comments from the commission. We will start tonight with Commissioner Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. So, a couple of things tonight. A, first thing is that, you know, I'm very pleased to, you know, be able to serve another few years with, on the, on the commission. So, look forward to, you know, working with you mayor, you mayor pro tem in these next few years. Secondly, this is, this is new, it's not new. It's information that I have, that I'm just processing, you know, right now as far as what the ask is. So, I'm, I'm going to hope that, you know, our, our new mayor can talk with, you know, work with the city manager to, you know, think about what those solutions are, if there's possibilities there, and for them to, you know, be able to kind of help us understand, you know, what the, what the concerns are, what those issues are, and, you know, some of those solutions that might be there. So, you know, I would certainly ask, you know, the, the city manager and mayor to consider some of those, some of those options, and, you know, what the, what the issues might be, and if there's other solutions, if that's not a viable one. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. It is not completely new to me, the information that you've brought in front of me. And I, when it came to it, I wondered where the city could stand on it. After hearing you speak, and you're right, Chelsea, you have done everything when it comes to helping the unhoused population in this area. You have made every step that you possibly can and reached out to every avenue that you can over and over again. You've worked with the city hand-in-hand on our own legislation, that's things that we needed to go through to make sure it worked for you as best as it could work for us. And I thank you for all of that. I may be overstepping, and I cannot speak for the entire commission, but I cannot see how we can look at our own residents and say, "We are giving you a death sentence. You need to sleep in the cold." I can't do it as a person and feel okay with that. I think you're correct that we all do need to come to the table and find a way to make this work or another solution work so that we can keep everyone protected. And I am committed to working with you in every step to help that happen.
Pro tem, Lottaway.
Yeah, thank you. First off, congrats to Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Larson, on your election. Well deserved. Was very happy to see that you were elected and back in your seats where you were before. I think you have big voices that are very important to this community. Big thank you to the former mayor, Mayor Hanley, who, if you guys don't know, Mayor Hanley was here for the previous year. Being mayor of the city is a big commitment. She has a young one at home, a family of her own, obviously. And to, to commit for a year to be able to lead the city in the way that she did in a very, very good way, she did an extremely good job. I just wanted to say a huge thank you to Jessica for that. So, great job. As it comes to Chelsea, your, your comments and all of your, your constituents that are here from Room at the Inn, we hear you. I could tell you, this is the first I'm hearing of it tonight. I appreciate you bringing that to us. I certainly think that, I don't know what the solution is. I don't think any of us can sit here and say, "We know the solution," because if we knew it, the homeless problem would have been handled a long time ago. We know that this is a big-time issue, and I will confidently say that there's not a one of us here that doesn't want to sit down and try to help figure, figure things out, especially with winter upcoming. There has to be a better answer out there than leaving people on the streets. I'll just leave it at that because I'd like to hear some more info. But thank you, guys.
Mr. Davis?
Yes. First, I would like to thank the community for just giving me that vote of confidence and electing me for another three years. I really appreciate being able to serve the community in the way that I do. And congratulations to our new mayor and Mayor Pro Tem. I think we've made some really good choices this evening. And most of all, I want to say thank you to our previous mayor, who is now a commissioner, because her leadership over this past year has been really, really good. And I know that there's been a lot of time spent in that role. And there's probably a little bit of relief, but there's, you can be very proud of the role that you played this past year. And, you know, again, I thank you very much. Mayor Schlegel, I would thank you for being Pro Tem, but I'm just going to let you move on to your next role. And I am really pleased that he is going to be our mayor. I've watched him over many years because even before I was sitting here, he was on the commission, and before that, he was on the planning commission. He's done a lot of service to our city, and I, I'm really glad that it's going to be continuing in the role that he's continuing. Chelsea and staff, thank you so much. You know, the compassion that you share for the population that you serve is just overwhelming. I'm thrilled that you have been able to do some family shelters. I see Kim Frost back there, it was several years ago. She was the one who made me so aware of the problems of homelessness with families, and I've worried about them ever since. Maybe I haven't done enough for them, but, you know, like the others, this is not something new. I think what, what I find most compelling is the difference from years ago in the homeless to what is, what we are experiencing now, not only in the numbers, but in the, the medical problems that you're seeing and what we can do about that. I don't know if Baraga Gym is their solution, but we need to find a solution. I think it's not only a Marquette city issue, but it's a community-wide, county-wide issue that we need to address. And I think that we all are, are interested in helping fix that some way, and obviously that needs to happen real soon. I know how cold it is tonight. So, thank you.
Commissioner Gottlieb?
Being next to last, I don't have much to add. I thought this would be a very happy meeting tonight. And congratulations all around, and then now I'm speechless. I don't have much to add. I'm kind of hoping city manager can help us out here and maybe give us a little more information tonight.
In a minute, or you want me to just wrap it up real quick? On the, on the side of the elections, congratulations to you both. I'm excited to be able to work with you guys for at least another, at least one more year, and then maybe another term. I'm not sure, we'll see how things work out. But I'm truly honored to be able to be selected by this great commission to be mayor for this next year. I think it was 2002, maybe? I was part of the Marquette area J.C.'s, the Young Chamber group that was being put together for a second run. And the mayor at the time was Stu Bradley, I believe. And Stu came and spoke to our group, and, and I had a conversation with him afterwards, and he says, "You know, you're, you're involved in a bunch of stuff." He goes, "What do you want to do?" I said, "Well, I want to be a part of this community, and maybe one day, if I, you know, I'm lucky enough, I could serve as mayor." And this is, this isn't something that any of us take lightly. And, you know, it's great to be able to sit here and say that we've got a number of mayors and one that's missing tonight that have, that have served. And it's really no different than being a regular commissioner, except for more time and, and probably a little bit more, a few more headaches. But the fact is that this commission works together as a, as a group of very strong-minded, heartfelt, just community members. And I just, I think we're very lucky to have this group to work together. So, that being said, thank you very much. Thank you very much for Mayor Pro Tem. I'm looking forward to working with you. Jeremy, that's going to be a good, a good duo, I think, for this next year. That being said, I will pass it on to city manager for your comments, and I would hope that you would be able to expand for us on the, on the topic that we had presented for us tonight. And let me back up. I gotta, I gotta say something on that part as well. Chelsea, Kim, I've worked with Room at the Inn since it began, and then we were moving from church to church to church. And I personally, through myself and through people that I know, have given trailer loads of bedding or beds, tables, chairs, couches. Kim's been nice enough to come over and pick things up a number of times as I've been able to acquire them. And, and those pieces go into placements for people as they, they find getting their feet back on the ground. So, the work that you guys do is just absolutely, number one, it blows my mind that you're able to, to do it on a day-to-day basis and not give up because it's just a daunting task. But God bless you for what you do. Thank you so much, and please continue on serving. And I know that we will do, as a, as a city, as a commission, we will do our very best to help in ways that we can, you know, whether it's... I know we're just getting into this right now for tonight, but I look forward to finding out some, some more information and looking forward with it, you all, for what you do.
Thank you. I do want to just say that Chelsea has, has said a common quote, and I'm not trying to bring humor to it, but she says that, I think we all cringe when she walks into city commission chambers a little bit, but I am so incredibly happy that you're here to explain this because when Chelsea stopped by my office on Friday, she just said, "I'm going to cut to the chase. I'm asking really hard and really, really big question," and had the same tears in her eyes here with, with an ask she knew would be probably difficult to consider. I, it's, it's absolutely important that we had looked at this, had kind of ran it up the chain of command in some ways, and, which comes to you guys now, but really try to take some consideration to this because there is such a severe, a severe request and need right now, above and beyond what I think that Chelsea knew she could ask for me, but she knew that this one is, is so important. Otherwise, she would have said, "I've already asked in 2025, can't ask again." But she has certainly presented the, the need to me, and I'm happy she was able to be able to, to come here. I'm sorry that she had to come here to make this request. But a little bit of the information that we had looked into and considered when we talked with department heads and with the city attorney, some of this is, is talking about the liability and the risk that is associated with operating a public facility as an overnight sleeping space, as it's not intended to be. However, there are some emergency, you know, you know, situations such as this with an emerging need and winter coming up that, that could be utilized. But the overall risk of having individuals sleeping and then getting the space ready for the use that starts as early as 7:00 AM with senior services and as late as 10:30 to 10, to 10:30 PM on weekdays for, for some of our programs. And I have the schedule, I think there's one night that's at 10:30, and the rest are pretty much at 8:30 or 9 o'clock at night. And that switch over to make it safe for individuals to sleep there, and then also in the morning to make it safe for our senior center programming that starts that early. Then there is also concerns with previous situations that we've had when we did have facilities open, which was a completely different situation, and that Chelsea, I think, had, had really addressed those concerns with the trained staff that would be provided to oversee those individuals through the, through the evening. The location was also an important part to the ask as well because our facility is, is just, what, two blocks from Room at the Inn, which would provide additional resources if it needed, and it would take away the need to find the transportation from another location that could be further away, like some of our churches were further away from Room at the Inn, that they could leave and, and get transported to the, the shelter for the daytime. So, it, it was one that made some sense to look into and to really consider. When we had opened up Lakeview Arena during COVID, because there was an emergency need and we had to have that space, that wasn't a facility that was being utilized for programs and already scheduled. So that's one where we looked at this and was a little bit different of a situation. But again, there is a timeframe from 10:30 PM to 7:00 AM that it's not being utilized. However, the proper supervision and staffing would be, would be needed. I, I, there are some other resources that we've been exploring. We're trying to find other locations, trying to connect with our communities, but I know that Chelsea's, you know, network and contacts are very expansive as well, so I'm assuming she would have already looked at some of these churches or other facilities as well. But from Friday to today, this has been the number one thing on my mind, trying to find every idea, and I'm not done yet. And I think that with all of us here, I'm confident we can try to find something and some kind of solution, unless the city commission is directing me otherwise.
Thank you. Just a question on this. I know that we've kind of walked through it, and I know what the ask is, which is clearly to use the Baraga Gym for nights for overnight sleeping for overfill so that people can be safe and not cold. If we wanted to, as a commission, to go forward with this, what would be the next step to make a choice on that? Because it's getting colder and colder every day, and so I don't want to push off if we're going to even think about considering this waiting, so.
I would say that that would be a direction from the city commission for city staff to come up with and work with those parameters and what that would look like. I would probably say it would may take some, maybe this, as we have a meeting next week, probably take that week in order to bring back to the city commission to make that decision.
With that, I think we should probably make an official, an official ask.
Yeah.
That we proceed with business, as you just commented, and how we can facilitate working with Room at the Inn to eliminate or to provide some emergency housing in some, some way, shape, or form, and we'll leave it to staff right now. Oh, yes, go ahead, Jeremy.
Yeah. I would even ask if, if we look into other public facilities that the city has outside of the Baraga Gym, obviously, I don't know what the numbers are that we need to accommodate, but certainly look, look more expansive than the Baraga Gym when it comes to our facilities, obviously. I, I don't want to sit here and say that programming needs should, should be thought of above and beyond, but we have a responsibility to the other people that live here as well. So I think we need to find the, the best means possible. So, no stone unturned, if you know what I mean.
Just for clarification on that, and I do want to say that at this point, it was 10 individuals. However, as the days grow, we don't know how many more would come. And then also, there would be some scheduling we would have to work around because we are receiving funding from the county and from Milage specifically for senior services, but those are the things that I would expect to outline in the recommendation that would come forward. Thank you.
And if we don't provide those services, we lose that funding.
Okay, good information. Thank you very much. I think we just, it's more of a direction. Yeah. So, with that being said, do you have anything else you'd like to talk about, Karen?
This, this is it. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we are adjourned at 6:46.
With that, we are adjourned at 6:46.